Events, or at least what I got is, we continue to be a school district that continues to fight above our weight class. We punch up, not down, and it's really a tribute to the educators and the supportive parents in this town. I mean, at ten thirty at night, when the bus pulled in with the kids who had been rehearsing for Drama Fest and had been going into Boston, kids are so wiped out, they're almost erased, and the teachers who are going with them are as well. And you think about the effort they put in year round. It's really a testimony to their professional dedication and how lucky we are to have some of the people that we have up at the school leading those efforts. And I mean, I, I, I think the, one of the standouts in that week was there's a, um, a kinda quirky student that I know who probably has been in my living room a hundred times, and he was called upon to come out and do a solo as a part of this orchestral piece. And for a lot of his life, he's been in the shadow of his phenomenally taught, talented musical sister, who went on to the Boston Conservatory. And he really blew the roof off the joint. And it was, the funniest part was, in the middle of this piece, while there's a pause for him and the orchestra is continuing, he reached down and snagged a water jug and took a slug from it as if he were on a soccer field. I've never seen that at Symphony Hall. But he was phenomenal, and again, just a testimony to the effort that's been put into that program, the talent of our kids, and the fact that this school really has a lot to be proud of in terms of both the performing arts and also the academics and the athletics, because we also have a lot to celebrate there. So, I just wanted to share that because for me, that was kind of a, a, a blowout week of varieties of student achievement at all sorts of age levels, at all sorts of venues. And it, it really just, I don't know, it just really impresses you that a town with this small a system can be, can be competing with school districts like Peabody and Masconomet. Really a testimony to the effort that people put in.
Oh, oh, go ahead, Doc. I was just gonna say that, in addition to the staff, the amazing staff that are doing all these programs and the families, um, I was at the middle school chamber concert last night, which is held at the Shaolin Lou. Um, and the Drama Lamas Going to Boston was in large part funded by the Education Foundation. So it just was striking me last night while I was, you know, at that beautiful concert hall, how lucky we are to have all these community partners that help to support what's going on in the schools. Um, by either, you know, last minute, you need thousands of dollars to go to Drama Fest, um, or just having these beautiful venues and having people there to help with the sound and with the lights and all of those things is just, I mean, it's such an amazing opportunity. I'm not sure if the middle schoolers quite realize yet how amazing it is that they get to perform in that venue, but it's, it's really wonderful and it makes you feel really good to be that supported by the community.
Well, June has said this multiple times, you know, public schools, we don't often budget for success, which is a strange phrase, um, but when we suddenly have programs that get to at the state level, um, maybe, maybe here we should start budgeting for success, I guess is what I'm quickly learning. Um, but, but we don't often do it that way. So, you know, we, you're, you're right. Thank you very much to the, to the partners and the, and the community who step up and make sure our kids can get to where they get and they get the funding they need outside of the, outside of the budget. So it's, it was a, it's been a whirlwind couple of weeks, so, and there's, there's more coming up.
Okay, so I guess that would move us on to subcommittee updates. And I'm not sure that we-
Um, the middle school council met, so I can give you a brief update on that. Um, I think it was our last meeting of the year, actually. But we talked a little bit about the superintendent's entry plan. We went through, through that with the, with the council. Um, talked a little bit about transitions, you know, we're towards the end of the year, speaking towards those, thinking about the fifth graders coming up to sixth grade and then the eighth graders going to high school. Um, and then the other thing that was really nice to, you know, which kind of follows exactly what you were talking about. Um, Principal Rodman is, I believe he's the director of NELPS, the New England League of Middle Schools, which just held their conference, um, a couple of weeks ago. And we had several teachers from the middle school go to the conference, but also several teachers present at the conference. I think three, three teachers or so, um, which was really nice to see. So, again, it's that professionalism and sharing ideas, it's really good.
That's great. Other subcommittee reports? Probably not, okay. Um, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any of that, which brings us-
Not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. New business, so I think we can move to the addressing hate in school sports, because Jesse-
So I do think we have at least one guest who's willing to fill in, short term. Do you wanna fill in quickly? Okay, so, um, so, right, so Jesse Palm was supposed to visit with us today. Yes, please. Um, but instead, maybe we have Mary Beth Murphy fill in, and I know Dr., Dr. Ray Cahill is with us as well. Um, and so, maybe you can fill in and give us a little bit of a commercial for what we were gonna hear.
Let me get the email, okay. So you guys probably all know that the Board of Health is now working with Jesse Palm, who's a regional social worker. Have you heard of about this? Thank you. Um, so we're sort of sharing her with, um, Hamilton and Essex. Can you hear me better like that? I feel like I'm buzzing. Um, which I think is awesome because it's sort of tying together a lot of things, like helping in our community. You know, she's gonna be helping us with, um, the opioid settlement funds. Have you guys heard of this? Yeah, so, um, uh, the Board of Health was sort of tasked with sort of trying to help the town figure out how to spend these funds. Do you remember how much they were, Ray?
It's gonna be, um, I think the town's gonna be getting the equivalent of about just a hair over ten thousand a year for the next ten years, if I believe it is.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so Jesse's been meeting with the guidance counselors, I believe, at all three schools. And she did have four points, and again, I, I mean, I could look at her, I could look at her slides and try to figure out what she wanted, but I can just sort of share also the email that she, she sort of gave to me. Um, and just let you know the four areas that she identified with the guidance counselors in the school that she would be requesting funds from, um, the town, um, for, uh, to be used in the school. And that's with, um, the first one is for transportation, because I guess there's a need for students to access, um, mental health services, uh, who don't have rides, basically. So that was one of the first things that she wanted to try to ask the town for. Um, vaping in school was the second issue. Um, and additional support for training around mental health and substance-related issues. Um, so that was sort of where she, she worked with your guidance counselors to see where she was gonna be fitting in, um, yeah, with the school. This is, this is sort of all, some of the other things not related to the school that she's doing. Um, the visiting mothers, yeah. Um, so that's it. I mean, I don't know that the, the Board of, the School Committee necessarily needed to vote on anything. I know in order for her to access the funds, it's basically going to be approved through the selectmen. So it'll be, you know, just, we were supposed to have our joint meeting on Tuesday, but that got canceled because of conflicts, so I think it's pushed to next month. Um, so once that happens, she'll have the funds released to her and then she can use them for those things.
So I do know that they're gonna continue to work with the counseling department, um, school psychologists, social workers, that, that kind of wellness, health and wellness team from the schools, um, to really kind of come up with this first blush, which I think those are the four points I've heard about as well. Um, and just decide, like, can we prioritize them, um, with and for her and with her so that when it gets to the Board of Selectmen, there's some kind of clear pathway? So I think they're trying to dig in on how, how much is real for the transportation versus how much around the vaping. The vaping really, um, is a massive push. We need to do some education around it. It's not about just, you know, eradicating it, so to speak. I feel like we're back in, you know, the eighties when high schools had smoking lounges and we had to go through all of the anti-smoking stuff. It just feels like it's cyclical and here we are talking about another version. Um, so from our perspective, it's really around education and that kind of, that kind of methodology, particularly around vaping.
Do you know, I don't know if you know, Mark, or if you know, will the money for training, um, is that exclusively for staff? Could it also be for parents and families?
I don't think, I don't think there's any rules attached. She can ask for whatever she wants through the, for the selectmen and they just have to, would have to approve it. So it could be both, either or both.
And in a perfect world, we're doing a wraparound, right? We're doing either, either combined PD, so to speak, or we hold, uh, School Day PD and then evening events for, for families and, and guardians. Um, that's, with this kind of work, that's really the only impactful way I think we get anything accomplished is if we get the families involved, let them understand where the concerns are and how they can help us, help their families as well. So, yeah, I would, I would be pushing for some kind of wraparound.
Uh, related to wraparound, so is the town getting money separately or just this money that comes to the school? Because-
It's all town money.
It's all town money and it's all the money that's coming to the school?
Not, it's not all gonna go to the school, some of it will go to the-
Because I think, talking about wraparounds, sometimes the trauma that causes the need or the addiction that causes the need in the kids is actually happening in the home. And I think in the past, there's always that concern that the school can't do it all, so some of it has to be doing, happening at home, so that's great.
Yeah, we could try to pull up, um, do we have the, the, I think there were like, the email that we got about all the things that we were thinking of? Do you have that? Are you interested to know what else we were, we were wanting to fund?
I am partly because I do think the community often thinks the school should have to solve all the problems. And so I'm curious to hear how the town is also gonna help the families.
Before you even do that, maybe, can you just even talk a little bit? Uh, 'cause I think maybe I saw one of the slides I went through, just about like who they are and, and like, what is their mission, I guess, if you know? And the other thing I was wondering, are there other funds that the, the Health Coalition has to bring towards Rockport? So, some of that, those, those four items you were mentioning, is, is that only gonna happen with funds from the opioid? Or can that still happen even if there's not as many funds given?
Okay, so I can only say that my understanding is that, um, there is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which I believe you guys did in Rockport. I don't, is this the second or third year that you guys did it? I don't, I don't know. Yeah, but I know that that survey is sometimes will free up funds. You can apply for grants once you do that survey. So who gets those funds and how it happens, I'm not quite sure. She would, Jesse would probably know better than me. But just the mere fact that we're doing the survey would set the schools up for other things. Um, and that's, you know, more in the future, so, um, do you wanna tell them more? I mean, Ray probably knows more about the Coalition, no?
Well, I'm trying to find that email, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, the Public Health Coalition, I mean, they were the ones that helped us do the, the vaccine clinics. Um, so they, they have sort of a wide reach. They're doing like new mother, they, you know, they're going now, post-pandemic, if, um, to new mothers' houses to like give them a wellness check. And so they're sort of doing a, um, a broad reach. And what was the other question you had? Oh, other, others, other things. Yeah, so funding something called One Stop? You heard about this? Yeah, yeah. Um, so Inglotster has, um, that going, that going strong. So we're gonna sort of be partnering with them and, and providing, you know, they, they thought about maybe having like needle, needle, um, deposits, needle exchanges in town, um, trying to think of what else.
For One Stop in particular?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, helping individuals just literally just getting to tomorrow, just getting to the next day, um, and making good decisions today. And tomorrow's a whole new chance to, you know, rinse and repeat and, and just make it to the following day, yeah. So that's what they're geared toward.
You know, I think what is really important to talk about when we talk about emotional health is, you know, there's, there's a negative stigma still around, you know, mental health in general sometimes, even though I think we're becoming more enlightened, so to speak, as a society around those needs. But just like we've gotten better at diagnosing cancer over time, we have, we are much better at diagnosing mental health concerns as well. So when we start to say, well, we see more young people diagnosed earlier with anxiety or depression or some variant of mental health, um, it's not that the, I'd like to believe it's not that the world is just crumbling in on everybody, it's just that we actually have a better understanding of how to diagnose the needs. Um, and so, you know, the schools benefit from partnerships like this. We're gonna continue to chase grant money, like we always have, from the Department of elementary and secondary ed and from the state level, um, and put as many of those into, um, health and wellness, um, needs as, as much as academics. Um, 'cause all the data says if the kids aren't feeling a sense of belonging, aren't feeling a sense of mental health and security at school, it doesn't matter how great your curriculum is. We know that, we should have known that fifty years ago. Um, but, you know, the time is right now to, to address it.
And I think post-pandemic is so, you know, it's sort of like, it bubbled up. And so having these funds available now is like really very timely.
Um, I think it'd be great too to get some clarity around, like Mary Beth said, the, the YRBS and what kind of funds that opens up for us, 'cause it really wasn't clear. And that was part of the reason why we had such a hard time getting it off the ground in Rockport, I think, because the benefit was not clear and we never really, I don't know if the person who was doing it back then resigned or is gone or something.
Yeah, she's gone, I think.
But, um, we never really got clarity around what sorts of grants or anything like that we could get. So that would be great and-
I can follow back with Jesse and ask her about that specifically.
And could I, I'll just connect with you about when she's gonna be at your next meeting? I'd like to-
Yeah, our next meeting is next Monday and she should be there.
Okay.
Yeah, but so I'll ask her.
Make it.
I have one more, maybe this is just something for Jesse, but, um, transportation costs, that's fantastic. But I think that even finding, uh, some, some, no, someone to even talk to. There's a lot of telemedicine now, um, and so that's an option, but kids can't even find counselors. So if there's any way, I don't know that money, throwing money at it might not help at all, but if there's any way she can help connect families to counseling would be great.
And, and you know, Colleen, we, um, at our last Board of Health meeting, we, we spent specific time talking about student access at the schools because, as you alluded to, you know, some of these problems, the trauma starts at home, leads to some of these issues, um, so home's not safe for a lot of these kids. And so they will, for them to have resources at the school, someone to just listen and, and, you know, um, so to ha- A, have somebody available in a time slot that's available, um, where what they say there stays there, independent of, you know, not even bringing the family into it yet. So those resources, A, the people, how do they get trained? How do they get funded to be there for these kids, um, is, is key. So that was something in particular that, probably one of the first things when we talked about the students, and where can funds go? How do we, how do we move, use those funds potentially to, to get that, those point people in the school system? Yeah.
And anytime, so I'm the liaison for the Board of Health from the School Committee, so just anytime that, you know, sort of those discussions are coming up, I'd be, I'd love to have a heads up and attend the meeting, um, too. So anything I could contribute to that or like bring back to the School Committee or bring back to the Superintendent, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, if we want, if you wanna have it as a line item someday, um, I don't know, our agenda's already set for their next meeting.
Oh, yeah, and not that you need to put it on, but if you're gonna be talking about students at a meeting, I'd love to be there.
Yeah, no, I think, I think Jesse's gonna be really good for sort of closing the loop. I feel like there's always been, like, we will communicate between the, you know, the Board of Health and the School Committee, but there's always like, okay, well, also, people at the school, like, she's sort of like closing a circle that I think has been missing for a while. So I, I hope it, I hope it works well. And she's a, she's a really great resource, and she's nice too.
And she's nice.
How did you find her? Thanks for whoever found her, but how'd you find her? That's great.
Well, how did we find her? Um, she sort of was part of, again, during the pandemic, we sort of got hooked into all these sort of more regional, I mean, we had never done it in the past that I knew of, but once we started doing all these vaccine clinics and we got hooked up with, um, who's the nurse?
Rachel Lee.
Rachel Lee, yeah, she sort of brought in all these resources and so they sort of worked together and that's how we sort of, Rachel Lee's done a lot to sort of regionalize things and there's been a big push in that with, in public health. Post-pandemic is one of the few things, positive things, I think, that has, have happened because of the pandemic. So, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of work going on, sort of trying to, you know, get everybody on the same page, all these little local boards of health that were all, in the past, we're all working sort of independently, you know? Sid, we had more decided what we were doing and that's what we did, you know? And now it's like this big, this big machine, so it's kind of cool.
Yeah, and Rachel, Rachel and Jess, they, they've seen a lot that's been successful. Hamilton, Wenham, um, and so bringing that to our board meetings and saying, can we echo this or start the discussion here? So, because they, you know, they just wanna keep the momentum going from town to town. So they've been great.
Yeah, yeah, sorry she couldn't be here tonight, maybe she had some sort of emergency, but, you know? I left a message for her, so.
I'm glad you mentioned vaping, because although it's-
Because you wanna go vape?
No, no, because although it's a lot less visible with the elimination of the fruit flavors, one of the questions the middle schoolers asked during Civics Day was what sort of educational efforts are there available to talk to students about this? So I'm not sure if that indicates that there is a personal need in that child's life, but certainly there is an awareness of it and a concern. So that, that's really good to hear, 'cause it kind of syncs with what our students are saying as well.
Yeah, yeah. And we, at our last Board of Health meeting sadly, both, both stores, there's only two in town that sell nicotine products, failed their test, where they came in and they both sold to underage. So they're both sort of on high warning, um, so that happened.
That's unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, but it's in, good in a way that it's like now we're in a new heightened awareness for kids not to be getting, you know, or not to be able to get them in town. Although they could probably get in one line, yeah, Amazon, so there's that, but, um-
Well, you've probably all seen this, so my, my two boys, twin boys, just there in college first year, um, and we saw this with some of their friends in senior year where they, uh, some of their friends were vaping and no longer wanted to be, but they, they were struggling so hard at the age of eighteen to try to kick this. And so they're like, oh, like, and so friends putting pressure on them, like, you can do this, come on. So, um, you gotta imagine what other resources are available when a kid wants to quit, but is just, there's the chemical dependency, you know?
Yeah.
At least they had the support of their friends. For kids who are kind of doing this in secret, it must be hard to-
Sure.
And I think too, I had a conversation with Mary Ryan when Colleen was in school and she saw a diminished lung capacity of kids. She notices, noticed that, you know, coming through back then, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. So it's, you know, even our student athletes, you know, you can tell. Um, you know, the, I think it's like a vitamin E that sort of set, uh-
Irritating the lining.
Yeah, it sort of settles in the lung and it's, you know, who knows how long it lasts for and what these kids' lungs are gonna look like in twenty years, it's kind of scary.
Yeah.
And the sad thing is, it was vaping, I mean, it was always like the, the healthy smoking, right? We all were told ten years ago or five years ago, oh, vaping is better, it's just water vapor, you know? And then, you know, makes you wonder.
Right, at four hundred degrees with-
Yeah, right, what could go wrong?
What could go wrong?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you both for your ad hoc presentation. We'll be grading you later.
Yes, I know. Well, you're going on to something even closer to my heart, which is hate and sports. I feel like I could write a book. And I can tell you that, well, Ray and I both, you know, have sporty kids and I can tell you that from the time Michael is kindergarten to now, thank God he's graduating, wow, what a change in what's happening in sports. Scary. And don't know the, don't know the answer, but I can, I'm gonna sit here and listen because, um, it's-
You've lived it.
I have lived it.
Yeah.
And not only one sport, not only one parent, not only one kid, but it, and it's, and not only just Rockport. It's throughout every, it's crazy what is happening on sports. Fields and the hockey rinks is just mind-blowing to me right now. It's not fun, so anyways.
Well, there's your segue.
Right, it's a good commercial, I appreciate that. So in your, um, drive, you have a couple supplementary resources. Um, Governor Healy, when she was, before she transitioned to governor, um, one of her big pushes of the, uh, her, her previous office was to really, um, attack this problem of, of hate in school sports head-on. Um, and she forged a partnership with Baldwin at the MIAA, um, who is also, he's a retired superintendent, very, very, uh, well-respected educator in Massachusetts. Um, uh, some of us think, uh, maybe a little crazy for taking over at the MIAA, but, um, we need good people, um, leading, leading some of these organizations. So, uh, Governor Healy and, and worked together to really partner to figure out how we can get kind of like a statewide leadership think tank around this particular topic. Um, it's starting, the catalyst is sports, but I'll, at the end of this conversation today, you're gonna see that in Rockport and in a lot of, a lot of, of my peers' districts, we're talking about taking this well beyond sports. We just see it in society and we feel like if we don't address this with young student leaders now, um, many of us are fearful for the next generation of leaders in our country and our world, quite honestly. Um, so the catalyst is sports, um, and that's, as you said earlier, that's where the problem is right now. Um, but we see it quickly bleeding into other aspects of school life and potentially communities. Um, so Northeastern University has what's called the Center for the Study of Sports and Society. Unbelievable, uh, organization. They partnered with the MIAA to put this together. Um, and originally on December eighth, um, superintendents from all across the Commonwealth, superintendents, their high school principal and their athletic director, and that was the charge, um, if your district was gonna participate, the three of you went hand in hand, um, as a leadership team to really learn about, um, the issues at hand so we can kind of think tank it, uh, in a broad-based way. Um, and then we could move on with some deeper training and what we could bring back to our districts to address some of these concerns. Um, so the kickoff was that full day, um, at the Garden, which was pretty cool environment right there in the Garden. We split into lots of different groups and had sessions all day long led by the professionals from Northeastern. And then we moved on and we participated in regional trainings. And so those regional trainings really focused around empowering school and athletic leaders. I don't wanna read this whole thing to you, but it's up on the deck for you, um, to help us develop our skills and tools, um, to build safe spaces in our communities. Um, really, the concept here was to help us understand how unconscious bias, toxic speech, and all of those microaggressions that are happening in society are really intersecting and coming out as incidents of violence, um, and how can we eradicate that and identify it and eradicate it? Originally through sports. Um, so that was primarily the focus, but the workshops were so, so powerful um, that Amy and John and I kind of walked out of these workshops feeling like we needed more. Um, so we went to a two-day training on the seventeenth and the eighteenth, um, at Endicott College. The facilitators were Jeff Lopes and Caroline DeSeer, both really, really high-quality presenters and facilitators. Um, Caroline does a ton of work in, in, uh, greater Boston area with youth organizations. Uh, Jeff is, uh, on the Boston Police Department, a high-ranking officer. He's also the president of the BIPOC, I'm gonna get it wrong, but I believe it's the BIPOC State Police, uh, Organization. Um, he's also an adjunct faculty in one of the universities in Boston. So we had some really high-credentialed trainers for this particular, um, workshop. And so we walked out of there, um, really looking for more. And so I emailed Dan Leibowitz, who's the executive director of the organization, and Amy Rose and I did a phone call, um, just, uh, just over about a week ago um, to discuss how Rockport Public Schools can continue this work and partner with the center. Um, and he was really gracious with his time, spent about an hour and a half on the phone with the two of us. Uh, we talked about all of the professional development we've done in the district already, um, in our first year together as a leadership team, talking about a sense of belonging and trying to frame, um, our theory of action around, around framing this work. Um, and we felt like we needed to dig in and do more of this training with the entire faculty. And then we wanted that to trickle down to student leaders as well. Um, so we scheduled after our conference, we scheduled a full-day professional development with these exact two trainers, starting at Rockport High School. Um, I feel like I've said this before, a lot of times you start with the younger students and you build up, but there is a couple of times already, I feel like I've said this to you, where I feel like we have to start at the top. Um, and this is one of those places where I think if we can do the work at the high school and really hit our kids who are about to leave us with some really good knowledge and skills, they'll go off into the world in a better way. And then we can kind of trickle that down in the next couple of years with the partnership with this organization. So they're gonna come in October, that's our full PD day, based on next year's calendar, and they're gonna do a full PD day with our faculty. They're also gonna run student leadership trainings on separate days for the entire sophomore class. Um, we're targeting the sophomores after a long conversation with Mr. Leibowitz because, um, we all believe that if we pick that grade in the middle, it'll get some legs and then they become your junior leaders and your senior leaders and we can almost do a train-the-trainer with our students moving forward. And then we can just bring the organization in to do little checkups and then we can bring it down to the middle school the following year. Um, so this will involve our student athletes, our, our, our leaders in all of these organizations, uh, student government, uh, fine and performing arts. Um, but right now, we're talking about a full dose for every single sophomore and then maybe trickling that out to specific, smaller groups of kids, all of our student captains and leaders in the other organizations. Um, the kids know it, the kids feel it, the kids see it. Um, a lot of the workshop, particularly the first day, was around, I'm gonna be delicate with my word choice, was around how families present in public. And how we, and I say we as a parent, how we are models for our children and how a referee- And how a referee should not have to turn around and police a bunch of adults in the stands, who quite honestly, you already had your shot at playing high school sports. So I'll just leave it at that. So that's been problematic. And, and it, and it's, it's seems to be never ending. And so we can't get, we talked earlier about, about substitute teachers. It's harder and harder to get coaches and officials for youth sports and high school sports. It's not about the paycheck. It's really not. It's about the respect that, for the game, the respect for sportsmanship and the lessons we are accidentally teaching our young athletes by, simply by our behaviors outside of the playing field. So again, we talked a few minutes ago about partnering with the community, with the, with the guardians and the parents. I think we need to do the same work here. So that conversation with Dan was great about our faculty and our students. But then Amy and I and John need to continue that conversation to say, okay, can we do a parent night? Can we do a forum? Can we have kids present at some kind of activity and demonstrate their leadership and understanding of this work? And it does tie to the work we've done this year that I've presented a couple of times on around a sense of belonging and really understanding culturally responsiveness within our schools and our communities. So we're just at the beginning of this. I, I've, in almost thirty years, I've been to a lot of trainings. This was one of the most impactful trainings I've been part of in many, many years. And I think Amy felt the same way. I know John did. And I know as an athletic director, there's nothing worse than just having to address some of the things that we're addressing across the state right now in, in youth sports specifically. But my fear is it will leak beyond sports. It'll leak into other aspects of these young people's lives. And, and we just have to find a way to, to kind of eradicate that at this point in time.
Were there examples of best practices of where they've been able to, to contain the parents? Because I think that's, from all I hear from sports parents, that's the biggest challenge for the officials, for, for kids who are often observing good sportsmanlike behavior, but then they get a cue from their parent and suddenly they're, you know, challenging the officials on a call they would have accepted. Has anyone come close to solving or better handling this problem?
Not from an educational standpoint, a lot of the conversations were really about containment. And how, how do we, how do we, yeah, I know, but how do we ensure that the student athletes specifically get a pure experience that's not tainted by the, the actions of adults? And I, we've had peers, you've seen it in the news, we've probably even seen it just outside our league, if not within our league, where they've just said, forget it, we're going to play games in front of nobody. And some of the athletic directors said, geez, you know, again, things we learned about COVID, some of the athletic events, when we had no spectators in the stands, they were great games. It's sad. It's a sad commentary, but you know, we shouldn't have to clear, clear an ice rink. We shouldn't have to say, nobody's allowed in the gym. We shouldn't have to say, get an app to watch your high school senior play, play a sport. And, and so unfortunately, a lot of it was around containment. But this kind of work being done by, at Northeastern and it, by different organizations across the country, I think is going to help us deal with education for students. But eventually just let the adult population know, you know, there's no tolerance for hate. There's no tolerance for microaggression. There's no tolerance for a lack of inclusivity. And we'd like to partner with you and for you for the sake of your kids and the next generation. But respectfully, you can't get in the way of that work either.
And I, I think it'd be interesting that, you know, letting the kids lead, I think is like, we're not being successful in what's happening now. So letting the kids lead. And I saw like a tiny glimpse of just the littlest part of that. I don't know if everyone else saw the video that, was it on Instagram or was it on?
PSA, yeah.
Yeah, the PSA talking, it was the kids, the athletes talking about like, this is our season. Like, let us play, let us, this is for us. Basically adults, knock it off in a nicer way. And I thought that was like just a tiny glimpse of, you know, if the adults are having a hard time getting it together and containing themselves, it's the, you know, reaching the kids and having them sort of be the leaders in this is, you know, potentially the way to go. And at the same time, trying to bring the adults in. But I think when the kids really get a good dose of this and start really strongly advocating, hopefully the adults follow.
And I do want to be careful because it's a public meeting. I mean, like any other concern we have, it's a minority. It's always a small minority of human beings that force us to react this way. You know, so the, the greater majority of student athletes and students in general are not manifesting in a hateful, biased, negative way. The majority of adults are not. It might feel like that's not true all the time when we turn on the TV and we watch the news. But generally speaking, that's not my experience. But things grow and, and develop. And so if we don't have programs and partnerships like this, you know, it could get worse. And so we're excited for this. It's a good organization. I don't know how many, I'll ask him next time on the call. I don't know how many school districts have really reached out to him directly to say, you know, come in and work in the schools. I'm going to encourage my peers to do so after this experience and just say, listen, if five, six, ten of us locally can really do this work, then at least we can impact our league, our region in a positive way.
When you say there's a regional component to it, regional training.
Yes.
Is that with other schools in our league?
Yes, yeah, so I basically, yeah.
Athletic director, the superintendent.
Yes, we basically went to the one at Endicott College because that's where everybody from North Shore went. Yeah, there were a couple, there were some people from Armac Valley that had also come up. But yeah, if you, in the bigger PR materials, I think there were six clusters across the Commonwealth that we could choose.
Yeah, it didn't list which districts were participating, but, but it's the ones that are in our league.
Yeah, and it's about as close to being voluntold for something as possible. So, you know, it was, everybody will go sign in, you know, you'll get the email, the follow up. And so I mean that in a little bit of jest, but I'm, the end result was unbelievably powerful, so.
Hey, it's kind of interesting when we hear about the discussions tonight, we've talked about arts, the music, drama, talked about public health, talked about the hate in sports. And we're not talking about the students learning in a classroom in the curriculum. But we're at a school committee meeting. And I find that very, very interesting. So we think about what schools are being asked to do now is so much more than what most people realize. And thinking about your communication plan and strategic planning for next year, it just, this is such a big part of it, I think. And, yeah, all of it is just, it has to, somehow it has to be a way to, to get it out there to everybody and bring it together.
Maybe we could do this at town meeting too, just saying.
Because it was so short. We have time.
Plenty of time to do it there. Plenty of time. Well, thank you. That sounds really both important and you've got the right sort of participants involved from Northeastern through the.
And as always, I'll give you updates as the work goes on, let you know how things are going.
Great. Oh, yes, question from the audience. Yay.
Comment to make, just to, in the sense of, I've, you know, Michael's been playing sports. And the FRA has been doing these, I forget what they're called, but they were sportsmanship programs for parents. And, you know, that sort of sounds like something that you want to do. And just to let you know that like, nobody comes. Or the people, or it's, you're singing to the choir situation. And I just wanted to note, like, you know, John does, like, everybody has to fill out the concussion form every year. It would be great if, if these people could provide you with some sort of, even if it was online, you have to have training about what you can and cannot say. What is a microaggression? People don't, you know, and it would be great if the parents had to, when they sign their kids up to the sport, you can't, you can't submit your money until you watch some video about, you know, about these things. So that's my only comment.
It was one of the conversations at the first workshop that I, that we attended was, what's the prerequisite, so to speak, for your children to participate in what we offer? Whether, whether it's a video that people say they watch and don't watch, or whether we actually make them show up and sign in for an hour session with somebody. Be interesting, but it, it, you know, we get knocked on a lot of times in public schools for not partnering up a lot of times and offering those things. But unfortunately, the experience is similar that we can hold a night like that and we get small numbers. Or you'd small numbers and preach into the choir. So I, I think we'll settle in on, on this work in October. Watch how that unfolds with the faculty and the students and then probably sit down with the leadership team and say, okay, what's our next step with the community?
All right. So next item, thank you, Mark. That's great. Next item, elementary school literacy update.
So excited to talk about this one. So here, so you just wanted to talk about academics and you want to talk about teaching and learning. And I'm itching to talk about teaching and learning. So some of this is repetitive updates because we, we've already talked about some of the grant work that's happened. But then we were in a placeholder waiting for another grant. And then we were in a placeholder for me to give you an update on our literacy curriculum. So all of that is very, very close to finalized. So I'm going to give you hopefully a pretty solid update here. So as you know, we originally were approved in October of twenty-two for a DESI Lead for Literacy grant. That has allowed us to develop a literacy action plan that aligns to our MTSS work at the elementary school. A really, really important connection, and that was missing. So we know through our standardized testing, we know through our in-house work, we know that we are struggling with reading and writing skills at a younger age level. So that allowed us to qualify for this, allowed us to get some guidance from DESI and from leadforliteracy.org, who partnered with DESI. So Jody, Goodu, Amy Waterman, Bridget O'Connell, Michelle Nade, and Bridget Sheehan worked on this committee to really help develop a literacy action plan. They present the plan to DESI in April. DESI sends it back with some tweaks and updates, and then we get final completion by June twenty-third. And that plan gets us in the, I won't say in the good graces, it gets us in the good graces of the department and puts us on this list of schools that has done the work that they're looking, the prep work, so to speak, that they're looking to set the foundation for our literacy work. That then led to a staff survey. This was part of it where they identified the top two literacy needs. That led to us doing some professional development around the science of reading. And I think I mentioned this at one of our last meetings, that we had a consultant, Brent Conway, come in who does a lot of work nationally in this area. Happens to also be a local assistant superintendent. So we were easier, easier to get us on his calendar than someone else. And we partnered with him for one big PD day around the research and evidence of evidence-based reading. That was a fantastic partnership. He did a full day, a full half day, sorry, with the elementary school. And we brought the middle school English teachers and special ed teachers as well. Because we started a conversation that whatever literacy work we do at the elementary school, it does spiral up. And we needed to make sure our ELA department and our special ed teachers at the middle school knew what we conceptually were believing in, what we were, what our foundational understandings were around the science of reading. And that we all kind of had a similar foundational base. One of our previous meetings, I told you that we had applied for the Accelerating Literacy Learning Through High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. That's a mouthful. We just got approval for this grant. This was another competitive grant. This will fund fifty percent of a three-year digital subscription for core curriculum programming. So all the materials, there's some caveats, all the materials have to be ordered by a certain date. We have to expend all the funds before the end of June. And we have to do some initial professional development around this. In a small district where the budget is tight and where we don't really have a, a thick, robust curriculum review and adoption cycle from a funding standpoint, this is a huge win for us. A huge win for us to get fifty percent of this funded from the state. Then we have conversations around our ESSR money. And we also have conversations, if you remember when we worked the budget, we pulled certain monies out of the three, the three school budgets, put them into central office so that I could have some kind of modest curriculum line going forward for pre-K to twelve curriculum review. So tho- those monies aligned with whatever ESSR money still could exist, along with this fifty percent funding, is going to put us really, really in a good position to move forward with brand new program for students right out of the gate next year. So the work that's happened, literally ending with today, as you can see, the last thing on the slide is that we had a Lead for Literacy team. They reviewed, they reviewed Curate, which is a Massachusetts DESI ranking system, so to speak, where they've provided overviews for all the major curriculum materials and resources from all the major publishers. And they've, they've ranked them for alignment to the, from, to the Massachusetts frameworks. They've ranked them in alignment with best practices around the science of reading. And they've ranked them around usability and accessibility. So Curate has done that at the state level. Ed Reports is a national organization that has also done this. So the way we worked this with the grant is that our curriculum review team came together and we needed to make sure whatever programs we were reviewing were at the highest level, not just at the state level for Curate, but at the national level for Ed Reports. And those were our cut lines. We then met virtually, not me, but the team met virtually with the publishers of the top five programs. So that was our, our cut point. We found top, five top programs through these two mechanisms. They reviewed the top two staff choices, came out of this review team. They met with the publishers to get, do a Q and A session. All RES teaching staff, so all of our faculty who will teach ELA, reading and writing at the elementary school, were part of this process at the next level. They utilized the Institute for Education Science Rubric on reading and language arts. And they reviewed all five of these programs on that rubric. And they did that during curriculum, PLC, and prep times through a nice leadership model there. And then our smaller curriculum review team, which was the first group of people that we talked about, plus, if you look at this list on the second to last bullet, this was the review team, plus one rep from every grade level. So we wanted to make sure there was some systemic representation across the board there. And they actually met today and came with their top two choices. And then Principal Waterman, Assistant Principal Goodu, and I will have a meeting Monday, if my calendar looks good enough. We will meet on Monday. They'll give me a full review of this process that I'm highlighting for you tonight. And then we're going to be talking to vendors and making a final decision on which program. So the way it works is that the teams came to consensus on two and they know that we'll be the final decision makers. And they have to be okay with either of those being chosen. And that's, that's where we stand today. So that literally ended today. They, and I just found out what the, I can't tell you publicly yet, but I just found out what the top two were just before I came to the meeting. So super excited. I can't tell you how much work has gone into this. I have done the least amount of work. Your two leaders at the elementary school have led in an unbelievably inclusive manner. And then all of the people that we've named on the slide deck tonight have spent lots of personal time, professional time, trying to get this right. You get one shot at this. One shot at the grant money, one shot to right the ship at the elementary level, one shot. Every kid, I've been saying this as much as I can say in-house, every kid only gets one shot at first grade, one shot at second grade, one shot at third grade. Can't wait two or three more years. I've never been a big fan of piloting. Because every time you pilot, there's dissension in the ranks sometimes because you're piloting different programs. And then you've spent another year and you might not wind up with that one anyway. So this was a really nice process. It was super accelerated. My experience is I've always done this in a, you know, ten month to eighteen month period. So again, they did ten to eighteen months worth of work fast, but they did it really, really well. And our students are going to be all the better for it. So thank you to everybody involved. Excited to talk about it. And really excited to see it in action. You know, we'll have vendors in soon. We'll make decisions. We'll have professional development that has to be done before the end of the school year. Then we're going to do some Train the Trainers again over the summer so that our teachers can work with their colleagues to make sure we're ready in September.
I was actually just going to ask you about that because that's by June that the professional development needs to take place too, right?
The first, anything the, sorry, anything the grant covers has to be done by June. Right. So I'll, I'll carefully manage the grant expenditure with June's help to make sure that we spend the money the right way and in a timely manner. Any other PD that we offer, you know, we'll still cut a deal contractually with the vendor around usage on the, on the program. And then I'm still, I think I mentioned this before in a previous meeting, but I haven't executed a full contract yet. We're still going to negotiate with Keys to Literacy, which is Jones Adidas organization. And Brent has done a lot of work with and for them. So we're going to partner, the hope is to partner with Keys to Literacy. Keys to Literacy will do the instructional practices work and the philosophical alignment around what we know about the science of reading. The vendor will provide PD on the nuts and bolts of using the product, two separate types of PD.
So the PD through the publisher is not included? That fifty percent is the purely the online subscription and then the PD is being funded a hundred percent?
The, that, it, it's good, I think it's going to depend how I negotiate the contract. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So I guess the, either, either way, there'll be a pretty robust kickoff PD. And then there'll be Train the Trainer PD. And then on top of it, we'll partner with Keys moving forward. That'll hopefully be all year long.
I'll buy next year?
Well, during next year, yeah. Yes.
That's great. Really breaking news.
Yeah, really exciting news.
Good. Looking forward to the updates. So I think maybe Jesse is in the room. Is that? So I think maybe Jesse is in the room, is that, can you say?
It's all right.
That's your... Sure?
So thank you very much for the opportunity initially, and then for putting up with my not being able to tell the difference between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock. I thought I was doing well because I was here 10 minutes early, but in fact, not. So I wanted to come and introduce myself. I am Jessie Palm, I'm the Regional Social Worker with the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition, which I understand too, I had some people in the room that kind of stood up for me and told a little bit about what it is I do, so I won't go over too much of that, but kind of more talk to you and see, my goal is to see how I can help collaborate and work with the schools, and bring resources that you don't already have in, and work with what you have to expand on it. In my role, I'm not here to take over anything that anyone does. As a social worker, I'm working with all areas of the towns that I serve, so that's everything from senior centers, the health departments, to police. So really doing a little bit of everything. And what I've been doing with, actually, if you want to flip to the next slide, this is kind of a little bit about what I've been doing. I started back kind of at the beginning of the school year, or actually at the beginning of the school year in this role. And working within different already-established organizations to kind of help network and connect people to one another. In Hamilton, I started a Hamilton-Wenham Providers Meeting, which really gave the opportunity for different people that may kind of have known that other agencies existed, but really connect them, like the food pantry with the school and the police in different ways that they may not have worked together. I'm also working, Hamilton and Wenham don't participate in a co-response program for police like Rockport does, where you work with Leahy and you have a clinician. So I've been helping them with that. I've been working closely with the School Resource Officer in Hamilton-Wenham in that district, as well as the counselors there. I attend their monthly clinical meeting that they talk about students that they may be having a hard time connecting with resources, or just looking for some other additional input. And within Rockport, I have been meeting with the counselors, maybe I've met with them three or four times. I started this year, I actually got connected with them when I was there, helping with a flu clinic that was offered in the school back in the fall. And I met one of them, and really listening to and better understanding what the community is like here, what some resources may be helpful to bring into the community. But I'm really interested in hearing from the school, or collaborating with you on what would be helpful. So I don't know if you have any specific questions for me, or anything? So these are some other examples of services that my larger picture has provided. Like we're involved in the clinics here, there's a visiting mothers program that the public health nurse is starting, that's going to be starting up in May, which that's their visiting all-new mothers to do a wellness check and assessment, and offer resources. I do social work interventions yesterday with the Essex Public Health Department, Police Department. I went on a, an evaluation of, public health evaluation of the house to see, not an evaluation, so I mean a... Like they were checking for code violations and stuff like that, and there was concern there may be older adults or children there, so I did that too.
Jessie?
I'm Nicole Altier, I'm the one that's kind of been on some of the emails.
Oh, yes.
As a social worker. So I think we were just sort of curious about, is it resources for like families? Could there be trainings? Are there, is it just sort of anything? I mean, I think the best people to sort of speak to the needs in the schools are probably the exact people you've been talking to, right? The school counselors and other people within the schools, rather than necessarily the school committee. But I think maybe, are there some examples of things that you've done in other school districts, or other ways that they've used resources that we could kind of learn from?
There hasn't been too much that's specifically rolled out as far as programs, where it's been one school year. Something that Rockport has identified, or the counselors have identified is, well, a couple of things. Wanting more training for themselves, and setting up some sort of program for smoking cessation within the schools to kind of help address the vaping issues. They had asked if I was familiar with any curriculum that could be brought in or shared, and I've been doing some research, and there are a couple of different programs that I think could be helpful. They're also interested in more training. There's a youth at risk training that's coming up in May. That's an all-day training that they were interested in participating in. At one point, they were talking about vape devices, detectors in the bathrooms, if that would be helpful. There is funding, we're still kind of working out the process, but the opioid funds would be most likely able to be used for a lot of these prevention. Treatment, prevention, or treatment of drug-related issues.
Thank you, and I guess I have one other question, sorry. Do you ever have resources to help with access to mental health services? I know that's been, talking to the school counselors, particularly the elementary school counselor, and just that kids don't have the ability to access providers because of all the shortages. And I know that's like a nationwide problem, it's a statewide problem.
Don't have the magic wand.
Right.
I wish I did.
Are there any sort of resources, or like navigators, that maybe we could have families up with? I don't know if there's...
There are resources in the area, like Gloucester has, the Navigator Children's Front has it, that they're hoping to connect people, but unfortunately, like setting up these programs, then you're connecting people to who? You know, there's not necessarily anyone on the other end. I was speaking with, Leahy has a program, a student assistance program that puts counselors in the school, but that's mostly for middle school and high school. And they have Team 14, which is a substance treatment program. And I was talking to the director of that, and if there was interest, it would be something that they would be open to collaborating with and offering something at the school or in Rockport. Because I know that's another issue too, is you guys are out here, and if there are counselors, oftentimes it's challenging to get there, to get transportation there, or you're spending, you know, an hour and a half in the car both ways to get to an appointment. So, but I think if there was a common theme, like it's something I could offer, like doing more social skill groups or skill-building groups, I would be able to help with that in a school, if that was something that would be helpful. Maybe more than just like a lunch bunch, but doing something after school, more of like a group thing, I wouldn't be able to do independent, individual counseling. Unfortunately, I don't have the time for that, but...
Jessie, what is the mechanism for contact with you? Is that through the Board of Health, is it through our own counselors, or?
You can, I can share my information with you directly, but the Board of Health does have my information, and the counselors have my information as well.
Gotcha.
But I'll share, I can leave my cards here. But yeah, I welcome calls or questions. And really, I can design all the programs or bring everything that I think is going to be beneficial, but you know, how do I know what's going to be helpful for your community? So definitely having your input as far as what would be the most needed, or a good area to focus on, or what you've tried and hasn't worked, or would like to try and try again.
Great, thank you, that was helpful. And your friends from the Board of Health did a wonderful job representing you.
I appreciate that, thank you guys. And again, I'm so sorry that I was 50 minutes late as opposed to 10 minutes early.
He can give you a hall pass, that's the nice part.
Can you just talk to them a little bit about the Youth Risk Behavior Survey?
Sure. Yeah, so I work closely with the Beverly Health Department. They have their Youth Prevention Network, their Regional Youth Prevention Network. And I know they had done a survey last year, I believe, last spring, the Youth Risk Behavioral Assessment Survey. So I'd be interested too in learning more about the information. I have a pretty good idea, I'm familiar with Gloucester's results that they had. But I know Mary Beth had mentioned that there was a question, there would be funds for more, was it questions if there'd be funds to do a more in-depth survey? Or to provide services, or kind of something that came out of the...
I think when we were being encouraged to do it, the person that had come and talked to us about it had said, if you do this survey, then it will make you maybe eligible for some funds to address things like vaping, to address, you know, just sort of those different risk factors.
Yep, oftentimes what grants need and look for is data. And doing the survey is kind of the first step in that. Then you're saying, you know, we surveyed X amount of students, and they reported X, Y, and Z. So that's why we're applying for this grant, that's why we feel that we would benefit from this grant. So there's definitely...
So that's where I think we need some help, right? Because, so this participating, if I'm hearing this correctly, participating in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey doesn't just equal a pathway to funds, it's data. And usually when you're looking for these grants, like any other grant that we talk about, you know, you need some kind of backing for it. So I do think that would be another place where you could be, you know, we're a small, small school district, we don't have a grants manager. We have hard-working people who are, you know, chasing grants that kind of pop up that makes sense for them. But I do think as you are networked, if you can help the counseling team and the administrators at the schools understand, okay, you know, whether it's vaping, whether it's risky behaviors, whether it's social-emotional needs, whatever we're trying to attack, I think you could help us figure out, okay, there's a grant out there for this at the state level, or the federal level, or the local level. And then we'll run with the data.
Absolutely, and that's really what I see my role as too, is everyone is in their own position, and has their own focus, and everyone has so much going on, so much work to do. And it's hard to take time to focus on these other areas. And I really see myself as, I'm here, I have the time to do that, so let me know what it is I can help you with. What do you kind of have on the back burner? That you're like, hey, we've always wanted to do this, we think that this may be helpful, and I'm happy to run with those things, yeah.
So one of our concerns, but also the opportunity of that Youth Risk Behavioral Assessment Survey, is it's going to identify problems, and then the schools are the only, appear to be the only place the solution happens. And we were concerned that we don't have those wraparound services in our community if the problem is coming from home. But the problem is seen as the school's problem, because they have the child who's experienced the risk. But I actually don't remember what happens with the survey results. I think we've got two years of survey results, and where are those? And it seems like those results are the things that we should be working with the counselors, you should be working with the counselors to identify how these services can respond to that data, to those data. As well as maybe looking for grants, using those data.
It is hard to share, to learn information, so, sorry, to, you know, because there may not be people that are aware of what the problems are, but they're still happening, just because people aren't talking about them or aware. So sometimes that first "share" is a difficult one. Yeah, but we could do it in a way that says, you know, if we're sharing the data, this is what we've learned from the data, and then this is what we're planning on implementing.
But do we know where the results are of the two years that have been done? Does it go to the Board of Health? No?
I know Chelsea, who is the director over at, that did the survey for you, would be happy to speak to anyone or share the results with you, and kind of walk you through it too. That would be helpful.
All I can tell you is what my experience has been in other districts, so I actually don't know what the pattern's been here. My experience in other districts is, it's a little more formal, like somebody comes from the organization, and they do a presentation locally. It's really carefully presented, right? So there's no identifier, so if, you know, I'm not going to blame COVID, but if that hasn't happened in this district for a lot of reasons, then maybe we have to, you know, reset that. So if for no other reason to give this body some good information, so that we have some good direction to run with.
Yeah, I'm happy to connect you, back to her, loop her in.
Thank you, Jessie, thank you for...
Of course. Do you have another question?
I just wanted to follow up on what Colleen was saying, and I think part of what she was saying was, it would be great to have someone also to help with mental health services in the wider community, because I think a lot of it does sort of get focused on the schools, when what's needed is actually wraparound support for families.
You can offer whatever in school, but at the end of the day, they're going home. Yeah.
So that conversation about mental health in the wider community, I don't think has traditionally happened a lot in Rockport. And I think it's great that that's, you know, with the Board of Health too, that that's kind of being brought to the forefront, and something that's discussed, and resources are being put towards it, it's great.
I'd love to do public training too, and informational nights. We have had one in Hamilton and Wenham on harm reduction, like the opioid epidemic and harm reduction, and what that means, and what we can provide, partnering with One Stop in Gloucester. I know they're very interested in expanding services out here as well, so I'm happy to do, you know, whatever's identified, I will run with it.
So we have some really talented student musicians, and I'm just thinking if we partner that with a concert, people will show up.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll talk about how to get people to...
Yeah, no, being creative, because it's hard to get people out. Yeah.
This will do it. Thank you, Jessie.
Thank you.
All right, so that would bring us to the gift of a PA system from Terry George.
You know what, I do want to interrupt at first, I'd like to thank Mary Beth, because I feel like when we first were bringing these things up about the Youth Risk Behavior Assessment Survey, other people on the Board of Health weren't really hearing our concern about the community needing to be responsive, and not just the schools. And I feel like you've been connecting those threads, maybe because of the pandemic. For whatever reason, you did it, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
And Ray, we're going to thank you too.
Newer to the scene, newer to the scene, but you showed it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
So we just want to publicly thank Terry George, who donated a portable PA system. As we continue to try to be inclusive, we're noticing when we hold small meetings for teachers, we tend to do pockets of PD in various spaces. We need to make sure that we have accessibility, not just for students, but for our adult learners as well. And so to have these little portable PA systems, and to have a quick opportunity for us to get into a building and be mic'd up, so to speak, is important, so we really appreciate that donation.
That's really nice. So I think we have to vote to accept the donation. Do I have a motion to accept the PA system presented by Terry George?
So moved.
Second.
Call those in favor. That would move us to finance, budget update.
This is another big thank you. This is just our opportunity publicly to just applaud the community. Big thank you to the community of Rockport for approving the school budget at town meeting on Saturday. We've said this a few times already, but, you know, the collaboration between the Board of Selectmen, between the Finance Committee, and then ultimately by the town, was unbelievably appreciative and inclusive, and our kids are going to be all the better for it. So we look forward to a very fruitful year next year, and appreciate every dime that the taxpayers have provided for us.
Well, and I think we should, some thanks are also due to you and the administrative staff, to June, because the budget booklet made it the smoothest presentation we've seen there in a while. We got a few expected comments, but really, it went so well. So thank you for bringing that model in and refining it. I think we've said to the public too, feedback always encouraged, because that's going to be the format going forward in future years. But I think that was really an unqualified success in terms of modeling and presentation. So thank you all for doing that. June, I don't think there's probably a budget update per se.
No, there isn't, it was just, I was going to thank everyone in town for their support for the schools, and the Finance Committee, and the Board of Selectmen for their support. It was the smoothest budgetary town meeting section, I think, I've ever encountered.
So you haven't spent all the money in the last four days?
No, well, you don't get it until July 1st.
Okay. We'll talk to you on July 2nd, see how you do.
I'll watch on TV.
So, school committee discussion, this is our moment for walk-on items. I don't know if anybody has any. Looking down the barrel of graduation, that's coming right up at us.
I'll rush it.
Don't rush it. All right, so we do have a need for executive session tonight for the purpose of contract negotiation. So that means unfortunately, we have to say goodbye to our audience.
Remember.